Mr. Mayor, in my comments.
Oh.
There's Commissioner Collins.
Can I wait for him to get settled so he can hear? We'll let the record note that Commissioner Collins has arrived.
I have arrived. Sorry about that.
Hello?
During the campaign, the primary concern of residents expressed to me going door to door was too much growth in too short a period of time. And for many people, the final straw was the Costco approval. It did not come before me as a member of the LPA. It was the intervening period where I was off. So I am as reluctant as you probably will be to grab hold of this issue once again. However, it was the number one issue brought up while canvassing during the election. And very recently, many city residents have approached me and the commissioners through correspondence and asked that we take the opportunity to withdraw our appeal to the governor and the cabinet of the decision of the ALJ, the Administrative Law Judge, which ruled in favor of the concerns brought up by a city resident that the city violated its own comprehensive plan. So the first question we need to ask ourselves is can we withdraw our objections or appeal, whatever you want to call it, prior to the decision of the governor and the cabinet, the earliest which would be apparently is December 13th? Would this action put the city at risk of a lawsuit, as I've been told we would possibly be, could be sued the next day? I assert that the answer is very clearly no. And I ask Mr. Mortel, have you seen this letter from Richard Grosso?
I've heard about it, but it wasn't sent to me.
Okay, in it, Mr. Grosso states...
I can tell you that when people settle a case, appeals get withdrawn all the time.
Okay.
So I mean, the legal concept of withdrawing an appeal is not far-fetched by any means.
He basically says because Ms. Cartwright's appeal was filed in a timely manner, Costco was well aware that the ordinance did not go into effect until the matter is settled.
So the Florida Statute 163.3184 is the process for addressing a comp plan?
Mike, can you speak into the microphone?
For addressing a comp plan. And what it says is that a comp plan amendment does not take place until 31 days after it is approved by the commission, or giving time for a 30-day appeal, or at such time as the final order has been rendered if an appeal is filed. So the comp plan amendment effectively has not been in place yet. That's why they don't have any building permits or anything like that. However, I don't think he mentioned, it's kind of odd that he was speaking to technically my clients without me there, and he's actually the attorney representing the other side, which is unheard of, but regardless...
Completely ethical.
Yeah, I don't even know how to respond to it. But for what it's worth, what he didn't mention when he was misleading you was that the city commission voted on the appeal and voted to do it. And then if anybody wanted to reconsider that vote, they had to reconsider by the next meeting. But that's okay, because then when the appeal happened, went forward, and the ALJ ruling came down, pursuant to Florida Statute 163.3184, if the administration rules that the commission is not in compliance, and by the way, I don't know if you know what's on appeal or not, but what's on appeal is that the city commission failed to review relevant and effective data to make the decision. Not zoning, not impacting wetlands, not apartments, not parking lots, but that the city commissioners, them, the people sitting at that board, failed to listen and appropriately analyze the data that was presented. But anyway...
With regard to the decision of the future land use.
Right.
Right.
But that's it, not what they ended up with. But anyway, when the administrative law judge came down and included inadmissible evidence that was not supposed to be in the stuff that was also submitted by Mr. Grosso, I brought it before the commission, and the commission had a choice. And the landowner, normally what happens, 16331848A, if the administrative commission finds that a plan is not in compliance, it shall specify the remedial actions that would bring the comprehensive plan or plan amendment into compliance. And then the board does that. So on December 13th, if we get a ruling that says it's not in compliance and that the board failed to do something, then it'll come right back to you as a commission, and you guys will take that action. So in March of '22, when the ALJ ruling came out, I presented to the commission that they had an option. They could immediately schedule another public hearing and address each one of the administrative law judge's rulings and accept and say, yeah, we were wrong. I told them they weren't wrong, and that they hadn't made any mistakes, and that in fact, they had gone overboard by having 14 hours' worth of hearings. Or we could file the exceptions and let the appeal period of the land wanted us to have the corrective hearing immediately the following Monday. Our comp plan says as soon thereafter as is possible, and our commission said, no, we're going to wait, and you're going to have to not have any land use on your land until this appeal is over. So he paid the $135,000 taxes that I mentioned at the time at the last meeting and waited. And now, we went to, we had a hearing in August, and the commission, prior to that hearing in August, didn't tell me to not go. And then in September, on September 12th, I had another presentation in front of the commission, and no one said to withdraw the appeal. And of course, the landowner has just wanted us to have the corrective hearing and give him a land use so he could move forward with his land, but we've said, no, you're not allowed, you're going to have to wait until this appeal is over. Now, I don't think Mr. Grosso, I didn't read his memo, so I don't know if he mentioned all these things, but people call that detrimental reliance. And if a landowner detrimentally relies on the representations of a city, and we failed to give him a land use within 180 days pursuant to the state law, and then three weeks before we got the ruling, we withdrew the appeal, I don't think they'd wait till tomorrow to sue us. I think it'd actually be today. But for what it's worth, let's assume for the sake of conversation that we did withdraw the appeal. When do you guys want to set the hearing and start over? Because that's, it's not about the land. It's, the accusation is that the city commission, that it wasn't even fairly debatable that the city commission reviewed relevant and appropriate data and analysis. So what, if we withdrew the appeal, the responsibility would be for this city commission to start over and do it again. However, he probably didn't mention that in order for Ms. Cartwright to file the appeal, that the ordinance that was adopted unanimously at two public hearings, voted on unanimously twice, was recorded last August, and she had to file within 30 days of the rendering of that. But if she wanted to address the issues that she continues to raise related to the impacts to the wetlands, she should have done that and filed a writ of cert, a writ of certiorari in Circuit Court. But what they did instead is filed an administrative appeal and argued to the judge that in the administrative appeal, that somehow because the two were together, they had jurisdiction to also argue these mitigation of wetlands issues. However, the judge ruled that, on page 172, line 23 of the transcript, "I'm going to stick with my ruling from earlier, when we first had the discussion, and when Mr. Mortel first objected to any references to the Costco site plan, CUPUD, and what was proposed." But what I, what as I described before, I walk a very fine line here. I'm going to stay with my prior ruling. I do believe that these are separate issues, and that this is a proceeding about the amendments, map amendments, not about zoning and not about the site plan. She also ruled that land use planning and zoning are separate issues, which are considered separately. She referred us to the Payne case. The Payne case ruling said land use planning and zoning are separate issues, which generally must be considered separately, even where amendments to both are presented together. In addition to that, she ruled another time at page 95, because I had to continue objecting throughout. It just could, they just would not listen to the judge's rulings. I have to agree with Mr. Mortel, and I've done a few of these now, where changing zoning and a proposed site plan or a master site plan was part of the same ordinance. So first, she said, I've done a few of these where it's part of the same ordinance, and I continue to hear how what we did by having them as the same ordinance was illegal. But she's done a few where it was the same ordinance, and she ruled that it's the same ordinance as the future land use map change. And I'm not authorized to opine or to make findings of fact on whether a change in zoning or whether the site plan map that was approved is authorized or approved or consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. That is a whole different proceeding that, as Mr. Mortel pointed out, can be brought in Circuit Court. Now, I don't know why they didn't file a matter in Circuit Court and challenge Costco. And I kind of wish they had, because it would have left us out of it. But instead of challenging the impact to the wetlands, and instead of challenging the density of the apartments, and instead of challenging the size of Costco, they said that the city failed to comply with Florida Statute 163.318, paragraph 5C1, that says that a plan amendment shall be determined to be in compliance if the local government's determination of compliance is fairly debatable. Fairly debatable means that if the city commissions, if it could be fairly debated, that the city commissioners took data and analysis into consideration.
Fairly debatable sort of means the tie goes to the runner, it's saying.
Not even just the tie goes to the runner, it's almost a presumption.
If there's any reasonable evidence to believe that the municipality acting in good faith, we're going to go with the municipality. So it's basically saying, it's a very low standard of proof here.
Right.
Fairly debatable. And she says the city failed to meet that.
Which, all we have to do is wait three weeks, and they're going to rule. But see, what's going to happen is, it's going to come out that instead of just addressing whether or not the commission reviewed data and analysis presented during the hearing, that the appellant has constantly tried to make this be about the impact on wetlands. And let me give you an example. Our comp plan says that you don't address the impact or mitigation of wetlands until the development phase, which is the zoning side of it. For sake of conversation, if you withdraw the appeal and agree that Ms. Cartwright is correct, then you cannot give it ag, you cannot give it single-family density, because our process is wrong.
Okay, can I just interrupt you there? Because we have, this is a very long agenda. This discussion is actually making the point that I'm going to make in just a few moments, okay? So, I mean, clearly, if we can be sued tomorrow, that needs to be brought to the attentions of the citizens of Stewart. I am under the impression that that is not the case, but we should talk about the way. And you're making the fairly debatable. So you realize how this looks to people, is we're carrying the water for Costco, unfortunately, because they're not involved in...
Absolutely not.
Mr. Mortel, I'm just telling you what people say to me. Okay, this is how it looks. And, you know, what if Ms. Cartwright decides to appeal? Are we going to spend one to two years on our own, because Costco can't join the suit at this point in time?
First of all, I don't know that Costco can't join the suit.
Spending the monies, just let me finish. And the resources to fight this? You know, this is, this is our job, all right? And I'm just reading from the comprehensive plan. And this is what people view our job. So this is goal statement. This is the very first sentence in the comprehensive plan. Maintain and enhance Stewart's quality of life, natural beauty, and small-town waterfront character, its stable residential neighborhoods, and its status as the commercial institutional hub for greater Martin County. 1A1. The next is suitable topographic and soil characteristics shall be a basis for the establishment of future land uses. The location and distribution of topographic and soil conditions, as well as other land use factors specified in this plan, shall be used to establish appropriate land uses. So what the judge says... I'm going back and forth here between a lot of documents. What the judge says in the decision, page 1449, it says, "The city did not present any non-hearsay evidence or expert testimony regarding the character of the undeveloped land." Not minimal, not inadequate, any. The judge goes on to say, on page 15, "The applicant's environmental assessment apparent," the applicant's environmental assessment, paraphrasing, "was not professionally acceptable." And this is a phrase that appears often, "was not professionally acceptable." And then goes, in addition, goes on to say, "City staff failed to conduct any written analysis of the character of the land relative to statutory factors that govern Flume Amendment." So a natural inference to draw from this is that we did not present any evidence, written or hearsay, as to the quality of land, is we were reluctant to have our data, data held up to scrutiny. Now, normally, I would have gone and asked staff about this, but none of the staff that were involved are here anymore. The judge goes on to say, page 15, "The only direct evidence about conditions on the property and its habitat value was that of petitioner's expert ecologist, Mr. Braun, which the undersigned found to be credible and persuasive." The only evidence. I don't know where Mr. Freeman was.
He wasn't...
She also goes on to say, or probably would have been Tom Reitz, she also goes on to say, "The high quality of the habitat is evidenced by the presence of a variety of high trophic-level species, including foraging wading birds like the little blue heron, tri-colored heron, great eaglet, great blue heron, and black-crowned night heron." So, you know, this is what we are required to do. Let me get the comprehensive plan back in front of me. So section 1A3. Environmentally sensitive natural resources shall be protected and conserved. These resources include wetlands, floodplains, portable groundwater, shorelines, estuarine systems, rivers, bays, lake soils, native vegetative communities, listed wildlife species, and associated habitat and air quality. The city shall conserve and protect natural resources through a comprehensive planning process, which considers the types, values, functions, sizes, conditions, and locations of natural resources." And the judge says, the only evidence she has with regard to the presence or, you know, absence of these natural resources is from Ms. Cartwright and her environmental professional. So another reason to reconsider is that when this decision was originally made, we did not have the benefit of the opinion of these two lawyers. One is the ALJ, I believe her name is Francine Folk, and the other is Richard Grosso, one of Florida's most preeminent land-use attorneys, who accepted this case and won. Let me remind you who Richard Grosso is. Richard Grosso is the lawyer who took on the case and had, and we've all been in municipal planning events, this case is brought up every single time. The apartment buildings in Jensen Beach that had been built were torn down, and Mr. Grosso won that case. So I think we should recognize his expertise in this area, and I would hate to find a self in another situation. So I'm, do we really want to sit in front of our citizenry in light of this information and these rulings and say we're not willing to provide you an opportunity to express your views? Don't we have the courage to at least listen to the concerns of the majority of the voters and attempt to come up with a better decision? Are we going to follow the law or play politics? And finally, is this the best we can do? I looked at a picture today of the project, and one half of the property fronting Caner Highway is what we all know is called the BMP, right? It's a big muddy pond. That we learned three weeks ago at the Marine Resources Council only functions at 40% efficiency after three years. If that's not bad enough, we also learned, and I confirmed this today, that those stormwater management models are based on 1970 rainfall data. If you've been around Florida recently, I bet you agree that what we've seen, even in just the past few weeks, that that data is really inadequate. And I bet the traffic concurrence was based on 2018 data. Are those calculations, are we really going to say those calculations are sufficient to protect the river that is so close by? Have we incorporated as many LID and GSI elements as possible? I bet we haven't. We were told two weeks ago that at the fire station, the Ms. Bruner you know, we're supposed to lead by example, none of the, we were told, none of these elements could be used in the new firehouse. The next day, I forwarded those plans to the MRC and was told that, yes, there were many elements that we could incorporate, and we will be including those in the RFP. So let's take this opportunity to bring it back. I'm not saying Costco won't end up there, but if we do decide to let it go forward, let's make it a showcase of environmental stewardship and a great example of what the city looks to achieve with all our developments in the future. All I'm asking is that we talk about it. This is my motion I'm going to make. I just would like to talk about it. It may end up with Mr. Mortel being able to explain to the citizens why that is not a practical solution at this time. And worst-case scenario is people appreciate the effort we've made and understand the decision we've made. And we have, as commissioners, I mean, I lost this week, I didn't have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Mortel, Hurricane Preparations, and staff, as I was absent staff, and so I would appreciate the next two weeks to get better informed. So I'm making a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we put on the agenda for, it's the 28th, is it? I'm sorry.
The next meeting is the 28th.
The, just let me try to be precise here. I'm learning about these motions. Yet we discuss filing a notice to the governor and cabinet that the city withdraw its exceptions to the ALJ's recommended order, and Mr. Mortel was mentioning, that's correct, and that the city schedules a public hearing to consider an ordinance rescinding the plan amendment and related approvals. And that's my motion.
As a point of clarification, in the event that we were to withdraw the exceptions, Florida Statute 163.3184 then says that essentially we would concede that the commission was not in compliance at the ruling. It says the local government must take the remedial actions necessary to bring the plan or amendment into compliance.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be a rescission of the ordinance, it would be whatever's necessary to bring that plan into compliance. And the issues that are necessary to bring that into compliance, I don't know what that is without having that ruling, because we had the benefit of Mr. Braun's report at the second reading. It was presented to the commission in its entirety.
I'm aware of that.
So is there other data or information that you would need presented that wasn't presented, because that would be what would be necessary to bring it into compliance?
You know, I think there are more options available to us than we've spoken about.
Well, you're talking, again, now you're moving into the zoning stuff, the, as it relates to the big muddy pond, that's zoning. That has absolutely nothing to do with the future land use. That's the zoning issue.
I understand that.
That's not on appeal.
I understand that.
That became vested after 30 days.
Right.
What this does is essentially becomes like a backdoor means of trying to reopen the zoning issue that no one appealed. But again, it's the commission's discretion, but I just want to be clear that what it triggers is a requirement for compliance.
I think these questions prove the value of my motion. I'm just asking that we talk about it in the context of rescinding that, I mean, people can't even agree on whether it's an appeal or an objection, but...
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Can we clarify what the motion was? It's to have a D and D and then a second hearing, a separate hearing as well?
The motion, as I understand it, Commissioner Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, is to have an agenda item where we discuss rescinding the plan amendment and the PUD. Is that what, the zoning?
It was to discuss withdrawing the exceptions.
Correct. Okay, exceptions.
Which would include, what are the implications of that? What responsibilities would it create for the city? It's a complicated discussion, and hopefully Mr. Dias could clear some space on the agenda.
Well, are we still pending litigation? Would that not be a shade?
Well, first of all, it should be a shade meeting if it was going to be confidential negotiations, but if Mr. Grosso's meeting with the commissioners outside of my purview anyway, he might as well come.
I've had no, I've had no meeting with Ms. Cartwright or Mr. Grosso. I simply read the letter that I received on the commissioner's emails.
I understand, that's kind of, I mean, he communicated directly, there's no doubt. But again, I don't, I'm not, I'm never going to shop at Costco, and I'm not going to live in the apartment, so I don't really have a vested interest in it.
I mean, Max Stuckey wrote us a letter. We've all seen the letters, right?
I more have a concern about if it's, if we were so horrible, and we did such a bad job, and we failed so miserably, why don't we just wait the three weeks and see what happens? Why don't we just get the ruling?
Because if we did fail, and we made these errors...
The list, what we need to do to correct it.
We're then stuck with it.
No, if we failed and we lose, they will give us direction.
No, 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 but if we win, we're stuck with it. If you are successful in your appeal, then we're stuck with it.
If we win, we were not, we didn't do it wrong. Our process was correct.
I understand that.
So, I mean, again, I don't know what the outcome's going to be. I just, I've never heard of that before.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, so, until we have time for some deliberation, we'll hear from the public. I won't be supporting the motion. First of all, we did it, we did it, I believe we did it right. I believe the judge erred. She used all kinds of evidence that was proffered, that she had previously ruled inadmissible. I think that, and I think that is, and we took 14, roughly 14 hours of testimony, including Mr. Braun, you know, we had hours of public testimony, not testimony, but public comment, different than testimony. And I also think that, you know, where I, every day, I have people call me going, city residents, including one of my neighbors that stops at my house once a week, asking me, when it's going to get started and supporting it. And I'm just going to, I'm going to just make a couple of clarifications. We do have staff that's still here, Mr. Mortel and Mr. Dias, they were deeply involved in it. But also the first, please, quieten the chambers. It says, you talk about the first paragraph of the comp plan, and I didn't write it down verbatim, so, "Stable residential neighborhoods." Is there something unstable about a apartment complex? A, and B... A, and B, community, was it commercial center? I can't remember exactly what the word was, but that basically we're the commercial center of the county. That is exactly what the Neighborhood Special District future land use provides. And I think that from a perspective of drainage and getting into, you know, the issue is not about zoning, but I do believe that we did a really good job on the zoning. I think that we got some of the best drainage, best site plan that I think the city has ever done. And on top of that, I think Mr. Mortel is absolutely right. Just bringing this issue forward will bring a lawsuit. I mean, without even, we will get sued and it won't be something that we can defend in-house. I think Mr. Mortel will probably be a witness. So in the last lawsuit that we had similar to this involved, which was nothing compared to this as far as what it's going to cost, was the harborage involving liverboards and some boats and some parking, and that was costing us $30,000, or no, $20,000 a month in litigation fees. And I can see, this one's going to be a lot more expensive. So I won't be supporting it, but... So Commissioner Bruner, do you have any comments or?
No, I won't be supporting it. I will be relying on our attorney.
Mr. Collins, any comment?
I've been here five years and he hasn't led us wrong yet.
Okay. So, do we have any public comment on this motion? Okay, please, Mrs. Cartwright, if you'd fill. Okay, thank you.
I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak yet again, and I have not spoken with any of you about this specifically, so there were no insinuations that there was any shade law being violated. I'm here to ask you to support the 1128 Agenda addition of the resolution to remove your objection from the administrative law judge's recommendation known as the Canor CPUD. As a reminder, the actual applicant and related parties waived their rights to claim any involvement in this when they elected not to intervene. They presented no witnesses for consideration nor any testimony. This case is entirely against the city of Stewart and not the applicant Eminem Realty, not its owners Joe Marino and Jack Morris, and not Costco. From Mr. Grasso's memo, because I understand that not everybody has read it. The city approval never became legally effective and thus the applicant has no legal vested rights or reliance claim that would preclude the city from rescinding the ordinance that approved the comprehensive plan amendment, zoning approval and site plan. This effort has been publicly supported by attorney Max Stuckey and ecologist Greg Braun, who stated in his letter to you that he believes the city and its residents deserve better than what has been proposed. This effort has also been supported by Vote Water, River Kids and Friends of the Everglades, who said in their letter to you, "The law judge found Mr. Braun's testimony was credible and accurate and found the opposite about the applicant's consultant's report." Now it's going to go back to the governor for consideration and chances are that he's going to rule one of three ways. And the majority of us think that he's going to send it back to the ALJ to rewrite her ruling, and that outcome will be the same. You will need to rehear this. You will need to rehear the land use, you will need to rehear the zoning, and you will need to rehear the site plan. The applicant will have to re-present to the commission all of those things, and it will be up to you to make sure that it is congruent with the ALJ's recommendation and your own comprehensive plan. From Mr. Grasso's memo, again, in sum, the city of Stewart, by operation of its own adoption ordinance, state law and judicial precedent, is completely free to rescind all approvals for the Costco project. Effectuating this action would include filing a notice to the governor and cabinet that the city withdraws its exceptions to the recommended order and that the city has scheduled a public hearing to consider an ordinance rescinding the plan, adopting an ordinance repealing the plan amendment and its approvals. Taxpayers have footed your bill to go to Tallahassee to fight this lawsuit that you clearly lost. And when we go back to Tallahassee on 12/13, taxpayers will fund your trip yet again. Your fear of being sued by Costco instead of your allegiance and duty to your constituents is absurd.
Linda K. Richard? Linda K. Richard? If you have a green card and would like to speak, please give it to the clerk.
Good evening. I was listening to the meeting as I was racing over here, as it's hard to get here for four o'clock, and I was surprised to hear that this was already on discussion in commissioners' comments. So my prepared comments that I had made for public comment are out the window. But I just want to say, Eminem Realty of Stewart, who owns this property, purchased this property on December 28, 2021. They have yet to pay a dime in property taxes to you, period. You can go look. Their tax records are right there. They purchased it on the 28th of December, so 28th, 29th, so they paid two days of property taxes. That is public record. You can go look. So let's cry me a river for Eminem Realty, who is a private company out of New Jersey, okay? They bought this land fully aware that we were under this. I am the original intervenor, as I'm sure you know. They were fully aware on December 28 of 2021 that this land was not settled. There was the DOA hearing. We had already had the DOA hearing. Yet they purchased the land anyways. And now we are scared, the city of Stewart is scared that they're going to sue you, but they knew we were already in this situation. So like I said, I just am sitting here and I'm wondering, and I also want to say that I'm very upset and disturbed that Mr. Mortel did not even read Richard Grasso's memo that he sent to all of you? His three-page memo? I heard you. Listen, you said you didn't read the memo.
It wasn't sent to me. I never got it. I heard about it today.
Well, the fact that he has not seen this memo by Richard Grasso and has no idea where it lays out in three pages on how you guys can legally do this, that the developer can't sue you, they didn't show up. They could have had their due process. They could have been intervenor. They could have shown up at DOA. They did not, okay? So we sit here as your people and we want to know why this happened, why the developer bought this land fully knowing that this was there. So as the sitting board of commissioners, you have the ability, as well as the responsibility to your constituents, to accept this ALJ's ruling, rescind your objections, and I want to give them go further. You need to repeal the ordinance of 2466-2021. Because you know what? That is the will of the people. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to correct the record. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, nope. Is that it? I am looking at the letter written by Max Stuckey, which included the memo by Richard Grasso. It is sent to the five of us and carbon copied to Dave Dias and Michael Mortel.
When was it sent? When was it sent? Do you tell me?
I'm getting used to this program.
Okay, and while he's looking that up, Gil Smart.
I can forward it to you, Mike. I can't see a date on it, I'm sorry. Wednesday, I'm sorry, it says Wednesday.
Last Wednesday.
City was closed since Tuesday.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Gil Smart. I'm executive director of Vote Water, a Martin County-based clean water advocacy group, here to ask that you rescind the city's approval of the Costco project that was found by a state administrative law judge to violate state law. Our specific request is articulated in the letter we sent along with Friends of the Everglades and River Kids to each city commissioner last week. Our concern, Vote Water's concern is primarily with the wetlands on the site, which were characterized as low-quality wetlands by the developer's consultant, but subsequent documentation by Sustainable Ecosystems International suggests this may not be accurate. We are concerned, as we believe you should be concerned, with the potential loss of higher-quality wetlands that sustain wading birds, particularly species designated by the state of Florida as threatened. As you likely know, the SEI report also confirmed the presence of several endangered, threatened or commercially exploited plants on the Costco site. The city's comprehensive plan demands that all of this be protected. So we agree with the administrative law judge's ruling that the city's approval of the Costco project was in violation of state law, and we believe the city should rescind that approval and go back to the drawing board. And per some additional documentation we submitted, Richard Grasso's letter, we believe the city has the express legal authority to do this. Now more than ever, Stewart and indeed all of Florida needs to be cognizant of what is lost when we bulldoze critical wetlands for yet more pavement and yet more development. As we said in our letter, we believe the city and the state stand at a crossroads. Let's not make the wrong turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Jones? Valerie Jones?
Please give them to the chief.
I remember the first time I entered Stewart, December of 1979. I drove over the old Roosevelt Bridge and thought I was seeing paradise. Now not so much. I spent nearly 40 years living on the St. Lucie River, watching it go from spectacular to spoiled, traffic go from awkward to impossible. 20 years were opposite the 49 acres the city's rezoned for Costco, a judge tossed out and the city appealed. I beg you to reconsider. Most Costcos are a third the size of this project, within blocks of an interstate served by major roads, already filled with big box stores and industrial development. This proposal is none of these. The Melbourne and West Palm Costcos are within a few blocks of I-95 amid a tense development. The West Palm store is served by a 10-lane divided road and has seven vehicle entrances. When I lived on Canor, it often took five minutes to enter traffic. That was before the hospital Wawa and the apartments on Indian. To go around the block took 20 minutes, four miles, four traffic lights, some taking three cycles. It's worse now. 30,000 cars a day pass Indian at Canor, three lanes each way. Now the DOT is starting a $5 million project from Cabana Point north of US-1. And there's another one, which the city's never told the DOT about, the DOT going to 95. Costco's own figures show 5,000 customers daily, 10,000 trips. The 400 apartments had 1,100 trips, 18 gas pumps, fast food and more retail adds 1,500 trips for more than 16,000 extra cars a day on a block that's a mile long with a school on one end and a hospital on the other. Your own ordinance says neighborhood zoning should be walkable with blocks of 500 feet. This block is 10 times that. The plan is a travesty. And remember the 18-wheelers, tankers, delivery vans? 40-plus days, trips a day at least, in and out, barreling along Willoughby from I-95 to avoid Canor traffic and tough turns. But that's all right because many trucks will come in overnight, wrecking the peace and quiet of million-dollar homes. Nor are the commissioners worried about the 2,000 kids at Martin County High or riding barks to the splash park, or the hundreds of folks who've lived in riverland or Cabana Point for decades who trusted a future land use map promising low-density residential. Because it's a wetland, the river is a foot below the surface. Look at the photos. I can attest to the thousands of birds and animals that live there, men crossing the road to the river 300 feet away. Even the occasional bobcat, pander, wild pig.
Your time's up.
You are the caregivers of this precious town. Voters gave you the gift of stewardship. You must look stewardship.
Thank you, your time's up.
Good afternoon, evening, commissioners. My name is Jim Moir. I'm a resident of Rockaway.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm also the Indian Riverkeeper and I am the chairperson of the Marine Resources Council. I've also been an LPA member of Martin County for 20 years. This is very close to the river. You've been admonished that you did not fully consider the data. I think it's really important that you consider the data in this decision, and that means listening to all of the data. It's clear that the environmental impact study didn't provide all of the relevant and important data for you to consider. I think it's really important that you open this up for more discussion, more debate and more consideration. You don't have another chance to save the river. The time is now for you to do the right thing. A huge parking lot, an impervious property, and a lot of the other things that are going to go along with this are not good for the river. This is a floodplain. It is in jeopardy of being flooded again. We were within a very narrow margin of being flooded last week. You don't have to go back very far in time to realize that the things that we have done are changing the landscape faster than we know. And we don't have alternatives to doing that unless we plan for it. And I think that you need to spend the time to plan for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of the public comment we have?
You got Walter Lloyd up there?
Not per, I don't see a Walter Lloyd here.
This is on this motion, the public comment.
Okay, yeah, so this is on this motion. Did you want to speak on this motion?
I didn't know that there was a motion yet, but I have general, I'll make it now if you would.
Is it regarding this motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Helen's up right now.
And, okay, Helen, I'm sorry, I didn't see you pop up there.
Helen McBride. I moved, Bob and I moved here in 1973, and one thing I did is try to learn the history of the city of Stewart. And I'm sitting here and reading all the articles on the iPad and that about preserve land. Well, I learned, and I know for a fact, Martin County High School is on the city dump. The land next to it was part of the city dump. It's not preserve land, it's city dump. And when you dig in there, you get plastic and garbage, you know, that doesn't allow the plastic. And I can understand the people wanting, you know, but we went 14 hours through this. And maybe you guys weren't here, but we were here. And our commissioners at the time and the people that worked for the city did their work. And it just bothers me that, well, because I was young at one time, oh, it's preserve land, we got birds. Oh, I have beautiful birds in my backyard. And you know, it's just, it is part of our old landfill. No matter which way you look at it, it's not preserve land. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Walter?
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Walter Lloyd, and I think it's pretty obvious from Linda Kay's testimony that that was never a dump. Her family's owned that property for a long, long time, so I don't know why somebody would be motivated to come up here and tell that kind of thing. But anyway, I'm here to request that you notify the governor and cabinet, the administration commission, that you withdraw all exceptions to the administrative law judge's recommended order, rescind the approval of Costco project ordinance 2466-2021, and repeal the amendment. It has been demonstrated that this is not the will of the people of Stewart, as you have represented to the state at the last cabinet meeting. The opposition to this project was never against Costco or responsible development within our community. However, we did oppose the proposed location, the covert methods with lack of representation and transparency in the processes leading to the approvals of this project, such as evidence of allowing annexation of properties with intentions for development, which would radically change the land use and conservation value of county lands while detracting from the quality of life of the existing residential neighborhoods in the area, of which I am one. Aid to the developers and their experts in progression of their projects while ignoring the expert testimony of the intervenors' experts. Wouldn't it have been a responsible thing to postpone the decision that you made for further study after you heard those experts? That would have been the responsible thing. There was even evidence of screening by the city commission of citizens' emails with prejudice against those opposing the development at that location. In fact, there were far more citizens of the county and city present at the planning and commission meetings who opposed than those who supported. That's your evidence. The very people who you represent have provided tax revenues to allow you to create these injustices. And then had to spend their private monies, which is probably why we didn't go the way that Mr. Mortel said, because it was a much more expensive avenue than the approach we took with limited funds. And to present the testimony which you ignored and to defend our position in the court of law, we had to spend our money. And where we prevailed, and now you continue to spend our tax dollars and private monies to defy the true will of the people. Why you keep doing this, we don't know. You can...
Thank you. Your time's up.
It's time for change, and please make a motion to...
Any other public comment on this motion?
This is this motion?
Eve, is it on this motion?
Um, yes.
Why don't you come on up? You're next. Thank you, Eve. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate you allowing me to speak today as I walk in at the last minute. I'm Eve Samples, Executive Director of Friends of the Everglades. We were founded in 1969 by Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. I'm also a proud resident of the City of Stewart. Friends of the Everglades has significant concerns regarding the CARR CPUD project and the threat it poses to wetlands on portions of the site, per an administrative law judge's findings. While the environmental assessment prepared by EW Consultants characterized these as low-quality wetlands, Greg Braun of Sustainable Ecosystems International presented evidence that this is not the case for all wetlands on the site. The law judge found Mr. Braun's testimony credible and accurate. The presence of wading birds on the site also indicates that EW Consultant's report may have been incomplete or inaccurate. As indicated in the legal memo we sent to the city on November 9, the city is well within its rights to approve an ordinance settling the case by repealing the comp plan amendment. In fact, that is quite a common scenario when plan amendments have been found not in compliance with the law. This is not about Costco, which is only one part of the project. It's about honoring the city's comprehensive plan and its commitment to protecting wetlands. Our founder, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, once said, "Florida has made great strides, but the degradation of the environment has become institutionalized, embedded in the nature of things. You have the ability to change that, at least with this instance and this instance, by repealing the comp plan amendment and settling this case." Some of you campaigned on this issue. Now you have a chance to follow through on your commitments. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. Okay, I have no more green cards.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify what's before us. I—I know a lot of people think that the Costco landowner didn't join or didn't participate and should have intervened, and—and that decision should have been made, but part of it is because of the actual appeal that was filed. If someone had challenged the mitigation of the wetlands, or if someone had challenged the density, or the zoning, or any of those aspects of it, it wouldn't have been the city involved at all. It would have been a challenge with the Costco project. But a decision was made, and I wasn't there, and I don't know why, Ms. Cartwright is probably the only one in the room that could tell the—exactly what happened, but a decision was made to appeal administratively and say that the city commissioners failed to evaluate appropriate or relevant data and analysis. Not whether or not they should have or shouldn't have mitigated the wetlands to allow for a lake, or a jogging path, or any other redevelopment. That was not at issue. And then, in the hearing, multiple times I raised this issue, and the judge ruled multiple times that she agreed with me, but Mr. Grosso still submitted a proposed order, and when the judge ruled that none of that testimony was relevant to this proceeding, Mr. Grosso asked if he could get proffered evidence, and that means you're going to keep it for the record, and then several months later, that evidence was submitted to the judge as if it was the issue that we were trying, and if it was part of the case, and the judge ruled that the city didn't put on any evidence of that part of the case. And you know what? She was 100% right. I didn't—I—I didn't have any witnesses related to the zoning. I didn't have any evidence related to zoning. I didn't have any exhibits related to the zoning, because the state statutes and the judge's ruling said it was not admissible. This is a whole different proceeding that, as Mr. Mortel pointed out, can be brought in circuit court. So, when I went up to Tallahassee in August, and the—the Attorney General for the State of Florida said, when she read it, she said it was completely unfair to the city for the judge to make the ruling based upon me not admitting any of that evidence, because that wasn't the proceeding that was presented for appeal. If it had been in circuit court, I could have and would have presented that other evidence as it was relevant to whatever proceeding, but the issue wasn't whether we should have or shouldn't have mitigated the wetland, and the issue wasn't whether it was the best wetland or the worst wetland in the country. Mr. Grosso, when he first brought the petition, said that because we brought the petition as to both the zoning and the land use in the same proceeding, that it opened the door to allow that to take place, which, by the way, was argued in front of the judge and still remains an issue, but—but was ruled by the judge that, no, that's not allowed. We're not going to do it that way. And the Florida statutes specifically say—and, by the way, when we say "brought the proceeding," we need to recognize, this was a land use application brought by a landowner, not by the City of Stewart. The applicant made the application, and the state statute specifically says that in situations where an applicant makes application for zoning, that the municipality or county can do both at the same time. The administrative law judge said that, has seen it several times, but that she needs to separate it. But when the proffered testimony, just by its very nature, the concept of proffer means that it was ruled inadmissible. That's why it has to be proffered. Otherwise, it'd just be regular testimony. But the proposed order submitted had all the proffered testimony in it, as if that was still the issue to be presented. So, when the judge read it all and looked at it all, she said, geez, the City of Stewart didn't put on—didn't challenge one bit of this. Nothing. And—and she was right, because I didn't. But the reason I didn't wasn't because we just forgot, it was because it wasn't admissible. And now to come all the way here and say that the city commissioners, all five of them, got it wrong for 14 hours straight, and then on top of that, the city attorney just took the day off and skipped the hearing, is just not true, and that's not what happened. What's happened is, it's been continually misdirected. The issue on appeal is not what gets posted on post-social media. The issue on appeal is not what we're talking about here tonight. It's a constant misdirection to try and make me and the commission look terrible. And I'm sorry if it does, and we haven't challenged it back and wrote things back on Facebook, but the truth is, I was simply waiting for the ruling, because I knew that in the end, the truth would come out and that the ruling would show what really happened. But for us to now literally—the—the hearing on August, or December 13, is no more argument. I don't get a chance to go up there and not put any evidence on again. There's nothing left. The actual argument took place on—in August, on August 23, and now, the ruling is all that comes out on December 13. It's whether or not the—the state of Florida agrees that Mr. Grosso introduced a lot of evidence that shouldn't have been introduced and misdirected the judge and caused the judge to rely on it improperly. And I don't know, but it seems to me like if that's the case, we probably want to find out. And I also—I—I take it really personally when—when Kevin Freeman and the staff was being blamed for—for not presenting sufficient data for the commission to analyze, and I can remember when the hearings taking place between first and second ruling—or hearing meeting with the intervenors and Jenny Sherlock, and doing a pre-trial stipulation and all this extra stuff, and—and at the end saying, okay, is there anything else anybody can think of that we could possibly introduce that we haven't addressed? And we went through the statute 20 different times, and as Commissioner Campbell points out, the quality of the sand. Well, guess what? There was a report done, there were two reports done, and Kim Lee Horn did a review, but I didn't introduce it in the appeal hearing, because that wasn't what was on appeal. In addition to that, there were probably 100 people that testified during the hearing or gave public comment about the quality of the land. So, there was plenty in the transcript on it, but I didn't introduce that during the hearing. She's right, I didn't, because it wasn't it.
Thank you, mine is Marcus, Commissioner Rich, but I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Mary?
Commissioner Rich?
Yes?
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
No.
Mayor McDonald?
No. Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh—